Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to Trending SCV with my co-host Joe Messina. This is Jason Gibbs, and one of our special guests here today is Mr. Matt Funicello. You got to forgive the chaos a little bit this morning. There's an accident it looks like we're seeing over there. And you know, we thought Joe wasn't going to make it, but sadly, he figured out a way around it, and he's here after all.
The doctors were able to pull the gun.
But we hope you had an enjoyable weekend, and you stayed cool, and we're happy to have you join us. You know, as you know, here on Trending SCV, what we've been focused on is just talking about the local politics here in Santa Clarita. And it hasn't been, you know, it's really not from any sort of partisan standpoint. It's just talking about really what's happened with the valley over the course of the city's history, from the time of the city's founding in eighty-seven up until today. And it was something that Joe and I constantly talk about as someone who's been around far too long and someone who's been around just a little bit of time.
My wife would disagree.
No, she wouldn't. I've talked to her. And so we've taken this opportunity. We come together, and we're meeting with candidates. We talk about some of the local issues and some of the issues that we faced in the past and how we've addressed them and how we're all trying to work together moving forward. And so today, we're going to have Matt Funicello joining us today. And I think we got Charlene Duzick coming to join us as well. She's running for Saugus Union School District. And I believe Brian Walters? I think Brian's joining us today as well. From the New Hall School District. One forty-ish?
Yeah. It's California. Everything's in California. No such thing as... Listen, do we know anybody who can like maybe take another look at the road design? So when we have an accident of this type, there's another way around? I mean, you don't have to be lifted by helicopter to get out of here?
Well, you know, I think we should have just more of the vehicles, like the little Ubercopters that they're working on. So you got these DC operators, so we can start going up instead of putting more asphalt on the ground.
My car has almost four hundred horsepower. Okay, I'm not giving it up.
What good is it if you can't move anywhere?
Oh, I can move. I just can't tell you how, but I can move.
No, Patty, no roads for Joe. He doesn't need any.
No, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, listen, in my estimation, I know that you probably won't agree with me for obvious reasons, but the most important seats in this valley are the education seats, are the school boards. And I say that because if you really think about it, why do people move up here? They move up here for the schools. They move up here how safe it is, how many parks we have. You know, this is a great place to work, live, play, and whatever else you want to do.
No, it isn't. Yeah, I'd like to refute you and say council's the most important, but having two little ones now in the Saugus School District, you pay, you know, when you have children in the district, you pay a lot more attention.
Oh, yeah, you start to change your mind as to where things are going and what's happening, right? And it's the same thing in our level. When you think of some of the things, the high school, junior high school kids are being subjected to, if you would. You know, you want to make sure that you have the right people sitting in there and that their real concern is about the kids and not about the latest culture thing that they need to deal with.
Sure.
So that's why I say the school boards are that important, and it starts at elementary school level.
It does. It does. It just doesn't, like, we talked about this. Like, your comment was like, water board is just not that sexy of a... Of an issue to deal with. Water is life, so...
No, water is not sexy, though. It's water. What do you need? Wash dishes with it, right?
But it's critically important.
When you have excess water, you water your driveway down, but you shouldn't be doing that now.
No, you shouldn't be, Mr. Messina.
But you can fill your pool.
And we should also realize that water is more than just talking about when you're going to wash your four hundred horsepower car that you're talking about, which to all of our listeners, it's not even built in America, but we'll deal with that another day.
Hey, listen, I am all, I'm probably the only guy in here that's all inclusive. I have a British-made car with Italian tires and an American driving the thing. So I mean, how much more inclusive? The leather probably comes from Spain.
Which, look, which is why, which is why your mission for CTE is so important, so you can... So when we have somebody who works on your cars, they know how to deal with all these different makes and models coming in.
When I first got on the board, that was one of the things we talked about on a regular basis. You know, everybody, I appreciate that people want their kids to be, you know, doctors and lawyers and so forth and so on, but kind of hard to get to work, though, if your car doesn't run, right?
Well, Matt, I want to ask you. So you and I both have kids now that go into the Saugus Union School District, and we both have children at Emblem.
I'm sorry.
Do you feel that your view on the school districts, and you've been involved in local politics now for a number of years, do you feel you view the school district a little differently and what happens there because you have children in the district?
Absolutely. I think looking at, looking at the school boards...
Don't mind us.
Looking at the school boards before you become a parent, I think you have not willful ignorance, but you're a little ignorant of, you know, what's actually important and everything like that.
Sure, what goes on there.
And that all changes when you have kids. When you have kids, especially when they go to those schools and especially when your wife works at one of those schools and a special education teacher becomes very, very important.
No, without question.
Charlene's on the phone.
Is she?
She called for you.
Wait, hold on. The Charlene Johnson is on the phone?
You need your headset.
Oh, oh, wait, hold on. We got head. Thank you, Patty. There you go for you. I got headsets. Hold on, Charlene. We're putting on headsets.
Hey, this is high-class stuff.
That sounds good to me.
Hey, there she is.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
What a perfect segue. So kind of speaking about Saugus Union, today we have one of the candidates who is running for the Saugus Union School District. I believe it's trustee area number five. This is Charlene Duzick. Is that, that's what's going to be on the ballot, right?
Yes, Charlene Duzick. Some people are starting to see that Charlene Duzick Johnson roll out because I just got married. So, yeah, I'm moving up in the world.
I was excited. Joe poo-pooed it.
I'm good with Duzick. I mean, I'm an independent kind of guy.
Well, many people know me as Duzick just because, and I can say that in the nonprofit world, because somebody said, "I sent you, I need your email, Ms. Johnson." And I said, "You have my email?" And I went, "Oh, you're Charlene Duzick. Oh, I know who you are."
Well, Charlene, let me lead you into this. So we're going to talk a little bit about, we always ask at the end, you know, why? Why school board? Why are you running? But you made a kind of a segue for us there when you talked about your work in the nonprofits. When I first started getting involved, the first things people would tell me is if you want to make a difference, you need to start understanding how the mechanism works, how all the nonprofits are involved, the people that make it happen. And I think it's fair to say that you are probably one of the most active young people in the nonprofit world today. Would you mind sharing with the listeners just all of the different philanthropic? Philanthropic? There it is.
And you got about two minutes.
Joe's only given you two minutes.
That's right.
To talk about the things, the things that you've been involved with since being here in Santa Clarita.
Well, actually, my involvement in the nonprofit world started when I was seventeen. You'll laugh, but I ran for Miss Santa Clarita, and then a year later, I became Miss Santa Clarita. And one of the things that I saw was, you know, when you have a title, a title is just a title unless you do something with it and something powerful with it, right? And so I went out there and I got involved in Single Mothers Outreach, the YMCA. I mean, a plethora of them. You've got Straightening Rains, you've got Carousel Ranch, all these different ones that play just many pivotal roles in people's lives. And that was just, to me, that, you know, I always say this in a lot of different settings, but the meaning of life is finding your gift. The purpose of it is giving it away. And I felt that my gift was giving my time, and I really, truly do care about people, and I want to watch their aha moments and unleash their potential, which kind of has led me to where I am today. I sit on a couple of different boards. I recently just relinquished my role at the Wish Education Foundation, but I was on it for about four years. And then I, right now, serve as a board member for the College of the Canyon Foundation Board, but I chaired their alumni committee. We did a lot of development with their, with a lot of their ASG, Associate Student Government. I've written a lot of recommendations for colleges, all those kinds of stuff. And the truth of the matter is, is that my heart just really resides on watching people grow and seeing what they're gifted at and having them take those gifts and impact the world because I think they all have a purpose. And so...
That's perfect, but you're also, but you're forgetting one big one, your huge and active role with JCI's.
Oh, JCI, I mean, JCI definitely, I still am active in JCI, kind of quote-unquote aged out a little bit, but I still serve as a mentor, and I'm on their foundation board to help raise funds to continue that development. And JCI is Junior Chamber International, and we do development, individual development opportunities through community actions. So through that organization, we still get to hit a mass amount of nonprofits, and we teach each of the individuals that go through it and help champion projects, how to delegate, how to project plan, how to manage a budget, how to market, how to volunteer, recruit. And it's just been fantastic and amazing just to watch the changeovers and people building their self-confidence, being able to learn and lead a group and a project and the transformations that you see within individuals.
Hey, 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 we want, hey, hey, Duzick, we want to talk about your school board run. I don't care about JCI anymore. We got that.
Hey, we all care about JCI now.
Look at, look at, look at, look at, so...
I'm sorry, Charlene. I tried to cut the mic off, and Patty missed my cue.
No, no, in all sincerity, I mean, she worked, she was one of the hardest-working people in the last election.
Without question.
And came within two hundred votes of taking out a president of a school board, which is a big deal.
That's true.
Anyway, so when she, this time around, you know, again, with what's going on, you know, we're running under a family-friendly kind of blanket, if you would, and it's your tax dollars, your kids, and your schools, and you deserve a voice. So Charlene, do you agree that parents deserve a voice? And what would you do to make sure that they get that voice, that they're heard at the board level, unlike they are not being now?
Well, you know, to be candid with you, in the last election cycle, that was one of my concerns. I said hypothetically, if I do not take the seat, you are going to not have one parent on this board, and then we ended up with a full board with no parents on it. And where that becomes a concern and where I'm able to articulate a parent's voice is when you're seeing the actual effect of any type of implementation of policy, how that affects and trickles down to your child directly. And especially during the pandemic, you had a plethora of children that were learning online. Not every child learns the same way.
That's right.
So in terms of delivering content, there are going to be kids that fall behind. There's going to be kids that struggle. And one of the big components, too, not just on academically, but social, emotional development really, really is impactful of a child. And that's something that really, really resonated with me, that I was very upset about this last cycle, and it was a blessing to go to the school board and see all these parents advocating on the same thing that I was very upset about with these kids coming back to school after being a whole year online, not being able to talk to their friends, not being able to hug, play, look at their friends. And then when they had masks over them, they couldn't even see what their responses were to anything that they, in terms of interaction. So the delay in terms of social, emotional development definitely impacted my family and my child, and we're dealing with that right now on an individual basis. So one of the things that really bothered me attending the board meeting is accountability. And I had one of the board members say, she said to the audience, she's like, "I'm not here for you. I'm here for the kids." Well, this is affecting my kids, so if you're not listening to the concerns that I'm putting forward and you're not holding a superintendent accountable to being collaborative with all the other superintendents in the valley, then help me understand how you're advocating for my child. So that was something that really resonated with me in a very negative fashion in a sense that I felt like I had people sitting on that board that just weren't really concerned about what was truly affecting kids.
So, all right, so the hot buttons, right? I mean, are you willing to fight for, are you willing to push back on the county and the state? Should they decide, you know, everybody smoked a little bit too much dope up in Sacramento, and should they come back and decide that they're going to go with mandated masks, and every child has to be vaccinated before they go to school? Is that something that you're in line with, or are you in line with pushing back and building a coalition to push back on the state and the county to make sure that these are not, not just mandates? They don't try to make this a law of some kind?
Joe, what's with all the softball questions here?
He keeps going. Let me throw you a ball. Let me throw you a ball.
No, no, throw a striker. I'm not interested. Go ahead.
You know, kind of going with that same note of, you know, you hear a lot out there about my body, my choice. Well, why does it not apply in this sense when it comes to parents making a decision that is going to affect their child health-wise? You have, you know, you, in terms of vaccinations, you have something that typically in vaccinations takes ten years for something to roll out on the market to ensure that it's safe and that there's no ramifications to that. We've already seen out there ramifications to those vaccinations and what are the long-term effects. So I think it's very, very important for parents to be able to have a voice and make those decisions for their children. Does that, is there any hesitation for other people to get their kids vaccinated? Absolutely not. You make the choice for your child, but that should be open to the parents and not a mandate for them. And then when it comes to the masks, as you already heard from me, I've already seen the social, emotional delay and impact that that has had over the last year. And I had to get, in our school district, we've had some amazing staff that have really gotten involved to ensure the success of my son and helping him, you know, in his delay and along the way. And but that doesn't mean that it wasn't there, and it was towards the end of the school year. So then when we come back to the school year, you're starting to see a little bit of those social anxieties start to resurface.
All right, so we got, we got the fact that you're paying attention, you're going to fight for the kids and fight for the parents. How do people find out more about you? Where do they find you? You need money and their vote, don't you?
Yes, yes, I do. Yes, 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 I do.
You got about thirty seconds. Pick it up.
CharleneDuzick.com. CharleneDuzick.com. Not hard to find online. I have a very unique name, so it's pretty easy. But CharleneDuzick.com has, if you want to volunteer, definitely need volunteers. Definitely have a donation page or a contribution page on that. And then please do reach out to me. There is a way to connect, that you can send me an email. But again, I'm not hard to find online. You can even give me a phone call.
You give her thirty seconds, she'll take a hundred.
She'll take that minute. That's how you do it.
So, so Charlene, again, Duzick, okay, Duzick, tell me again, what's the website? Quick.
CharleneDuzick.com. And it's with an S. Charlene with an S.
And D U Z I C K dot com. So CharleneDuzick.com. Charlene, Patty's going to make us go to commercial.
You got my vote.
Thank you for joining us. This is Trending SCV.
Even though you're not in my area, I'll vote.
There is only one language spoken at Thai Dish, and it sounds something like this.
Mmm, 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 this is great.
Once people get a taste of Thai Dishes, there's really no reason to do any more talking. Make it full of flavor. Make it delicious. Only at Thai Dishes. Enjoy the atmosphere, love the food. Thai Dishes on Valencia Boulevard for free delivery. Two five three FOOD. That's two five three F O O D.
This is Bradley from Santa Clarita Grocery, the all-volunteer grocery program serving children, families, and individuals experiencing food insecurities. Since January twenty twenty, Santa Clarita Grocery has distributed eighty-three tons of fresh groceries to four thousand four hundred and sixty-five families in the SCV. Santa Clarita Grocery is a drive-up, drive-through service with physical distancing in place to continue serving our community. If you are in need or looking for a charity to do the most good for our community, please consider partnering with us by donating to Santa Clarita Grocery, one of the most efficient charities in the Santa Clarita Valley. A full ninety-nine cents out of every dollar goes directly back to the community. Santa Clarita Grocery operates on a one percent overhead and is sustained through private donations. Santa Clarita Grocery is at two one one seven six Center Point Parkway in the Oasis Furniture Parking Lot. Please visit our website, santaclaritagrocery.org, or Facebook at Santa Clarita Grocery to make a difference in our awesome town community. Six six one four two five seven five seven five. Be our guest and experience the difference.
Time for a car wash, but fearful of the scratches that go along with it. Caney Car Wash and Valencia Car Wash proudly use one hundred percent lambs cloth to prevent scratches and provide the best wash possible. Both locations use environmentally-friendly solutions to wash and wax your vehicle, and they both accept all other car wash coupons. Give your vehicle the wash it deserves. Visit Caney Car Wash on Solidad across from Edward Cinema or Valencia Car Wash on Creekside Road behind Target.
Dr. Neil Green has been treating Santa Clarita patients and making them smile for over thirty-five years. As a child, Dr. Green had a fear of the dentist and disliked even simple checkups. Today, he's sensitive to your needs. If you have anxiety about getting a checkup, he understands your apprehension, even if you've avoided the dentist for years. Discover the comfort of visiting a dentist with Dr. Neil Green. Dentistry is his profession. People are his focus. NeilGreenDDS.com. That's Neil, N E A L, Green, DDS.com.
K H T S, your hometown station.
Why, I've never been so insulted in my life.
Well, it's early yet.
Hey, you gonna bring us in, or are you just gonna sit there?
Well, you were just talking, literally, everybody, you couldn't hear it, but Mr. Messina was talking about just how wonderful that intro was.
And you still didn't put, but you didn't put your headset on, so you don't really care.
That's how I knew it was good. I didn't even have to listen. It was that good.
Because I did it, right?
You're listening to Trending SCV here on your hometown station. AM twelve twenty, FM ninety-eight point one, K H T S.
You read that off the sign.
Well, if I didn't read it off the sign, we'd be hearing country radio right now, so...
And you got a problem with country?
No, I don't have a problem with it, but people might want to hear you. Now, I can't even take that. That's not true. So next up, I know we're going to have Mr. Brian Walters calling in from the New Hall School District to talk to us a little bit about the district and his race, but I wanted to touch on something before I have to get up and run and leave this to Joe, so I apologize to the listeners already. Charlene touched about the social, emotional learning and what parents had to deal with during COVID and the changing of instruction and the online instruction. And depending on where you were coming from, it was very hard. You know, part of it was hard, you know, for me personally, explaining what was happening. You know, explaining, you know, for me, you know, I have a five-year-old son who has autism. And before he started Emblem, you know, one of his biggest cruxes, if you would, was that, that social and that emotional in-person learning. And once we started that, we really saw a change in his personality and how he handled people, and it was wonderful. And then all of a sudden, the restrictions came in. And even when he was going to school after it was online, it was, you were always masked. So you, one of your biggest emotional pieces was always covered. And I'm not even here to debate good or bad, but I can tell you, as a parent who had a child with special needs, now we're getting past it. The schools are not requiring it, but kids can bring masks if they need it. Aiden's getting to the point where he wants to have that mask with him because he sees it as a security blanket. And so before, it was explaining why it was necessary, you know, based on the virus and based on what was happening in society. But now, at that age, he feels it's necessary, and he feels it's needed, and it's become very hard to break. And Matt, I was curious, in your experience with your family and your kids, was there a struggle? Did your kids, were they able to get along with it and understand it? Are they still struggling with it now, or did they have the experience where it was okay? That's the way it should have been, and it hasn't been a problem?
I like to think that my two boys handled it extremely well. They're tough, they're resilient, but I know it did affect them. I know my oldest son, he kind of shares, he's got ADHD, just like I did, or I do, whatever. And it was, it's extremely difficult, and I can only, I can't even imagine what it was like for special needs students and their parents, you know. I like to, I like to give a special shout-out to my wife and all the other paraeducators and special education teachers. My wife is one of the, one of the rap teachers at Emblem. And I am very thankful to know that the, that program, specifically at Emblem and other areas within the district, they work their butts off every single day, and I'm not talking about Monday through Friday, every single day. Even on vacations, you know, my wife works every single day on that stuff. And she actually saw, it was a huge shift for those students specifically. And again, you know, like we were talking about before, you don't really know that until you're a parent. You don't really know what the struggles are going to be until you are a parent and you know some of the policies firsthand that are put in place that your kids have to struggle with day in and day out. You know, it's been said, and I know, Joe, you've said this before, COVID was a blessing in disguise almost for parents to actually get a very intimate viewpoint on what goes on in the schools. So we have that to be thankful for, but at the same time, the damage was tremendous.
Without question. And Joe, as a softball to you, as I mosey out the door, you know, we've given perspectives from what it was to be a parent with kids in the district. And, you know, Charlene mentioned one of her big things was her not winning the election in twenty eighteen. You had five board members who, let's assume to all intents purposes, they were there for the right reasons and good hearts, but there was a big perspective missing in having parents. But you would fall into that perspective, having, not having kids currently in the Hart School District. Maybe you have a grandchild maybe in one of the school districts, but, but you don't have any kids in the district. And I don't know if anybody, I think Joe would say, is if you've been under a rock, the Hart Board kind of became a little hot point for both parents and educators and people from both sides of the issue on what was appropriate in dealing with masks and in dealing with COVID. And if you would, would you mind just discussing what it was like through your eyes? And I think most people know where your stance was, and maybe you were the kind of the minority voice, but you had, you had a tough job over there during that point in time.
You know, the thing that bothered me the most, you and I talked about during that time, but it's, you follow science. Do you really follow the science? And between the CDC and other organizations, you were getting mixed messages, but the messages you were getting from the child psychologist was all the same. Putting masks on a kid is detrimental to their health, their mental health, and their learning. So it's kind of like you're looking at the same, the numbers of kids that transfer this, this virus to each other was almost immeasurable. And yet, you had them telling us that they had to be masked up, and look at the damage we've done. That damage will go on for decades. People think that, okay, we're going to get back to normal, you got the masks off of them. No, that's not true. This damage is going to go on for decades. And as, as, you know, I kind of resent, and I know people use it, you know, you got no kids in the district. That doesn't mean you don't care.
Sure.
And, and, and a matter of fact, I would even say to a degree, I'm not looking to go, ooh, my daughter doesn't like that. I'm looking and going, okay, I'm hearing from these parents. I'm hearing from these parents. I'll tell you during that whole thing, it was about a third, a third, a third. We had a third of the parents that wanted masks, a third of the parents said, hey, give people the option. A third said, I can't make out this information. So for me, you're right. So for somebody who's not up there because they want to become governor and they really like what they're doing.
Right.
I'm sitting here going, all right, there's got to be a way to make this work. But that's where it's so important that you have the right people at the county, the right people at the state level to make it happen.
I'm curious, in your experience on the board, was this the first time you ever actually experienced a protest inside the boardroom, where you actually had to sit down? Because there was one meeting where you guys had to shut down because you literally had someone who was so passionate about this issue.
It is, it is the first time that I've been there that we had the cancel meeting because we did have a protest, right? And, and it wasn't the protest in itself, because frankly, if they had just sat there, I would have gone on with the meeting, all right? Sit there, have fun. We'll bring you water. But the reality was is that they ripped their masks off. And according to LA County, we couldn't continue on that way, so... And we've got Brian Walters who could probably do a better job than I can at all this.
Well, I'm going to turn it over, Brian, to keep a close eye on you for the next twenty minutes, but...
Then you lose. Yeah, he doesn't want the job, okay? Brian Walters, Brian.
We all do our part.
You know, Brian, I'd love to say that I'm kind of jealous of the New Hall School District because you guys became the golden boys, if you would, this year. And especially with, you know, your leadership and your board members championing the fact that, no, the kids shouldn't have the masks on. They should, there should be a choice by the parents, if you would. And give us some quick information. How long have you been on the board and why you want to continue?
Sure. I've been on the board since two thousand nine. I was appointed to fill in for Michael McGrath. He decided mid-election that he was not going to continue, and I was re-elected to fill my two-year term. I've been there ever since. So, you know, finishing up my third, about, yeah, finishing up my thirteenth year. So, so, and I actually wasn't going to run again. The reason why I did was that our superintendent, who was working side by side with me to make sure that our parents and our families had choices and to continue our successes, stepped down. It was, he reached a point where it was just too much and all the, and we were all a little more aged after the last couple of years, to be honest. But I realized that in order to protect all the work that we had done over many years, not just during the pandemic, but, but the striving for excellence, the protecting parent choice and rights to make sure music and arts stayed front and center in our schools and to make sure that there was this focus on a whole child and inclusivity all around, I realized that I needed to stay on. I actually do have two children still in the district. I have three that have matriculated on, two that are, one still left in the Hart District and two that have graduated from there. So this, I, this does affect my kids directly, not just other kids, although I agree, I got to hear what you said, and I do agree with you fully, Joe, that this is not, whether it's our kids or somebody else's kids, the reality is they're kids, and we have an obligation and a duty to make sure those kids are looked after and they get the best education possible while supporting their mental, emotional wellness.
You know, Brian, one of the things, as a current board member myself, and you're a board member, you know, we get emails during these, these moments where people will say, don't you care about my kid? Don't you care about my kid? And these kids, these people are from both sides of the aisle, if you would, or both sides of the situation. And, and you know, I know you feel the same way I do. It kind of breaks your heart a bit. You're sitting here going, look, I'm not against your child, or I'm not against your child. I've got to make the best decision for all people. And it's not just me making that decision. A real board member reaches out, gets the information they need, listens to what, we are a representative form of government, so we listen to what the parents have to say. How do, how do you rectify all of that? And you're an attorney on top of it, so you probably argue with yourself over this, but...
I've been known to have very public, public self-esteem. That's true. So the reality is, is it was hard because it's emotional, it's an emotional thing. The lockdown was not invited by individuals, and yet we all experienced it. And I think if you went to other states, they had a very different experience than we had, particularly here in LA County. And so I was very sympathetic to all points of view, especially very early on. I actually was supportive initially with Governor Newsom's lockdown when it was going to be a two-week affair because there was so little known and so little that was going on. The problem is, as it dragged on over months and months... little that was going on. The problem is, as it dragged on over months and months, it became very clear that, that kids were, that students and youth were, needs were not being met. And the first time that I can think of, at least in my lifetime, we, we put everyone else's needs above kids in a way that I think is going to, to hurt for a long time to come. And that's not to, to fault anybody for positions they took. You know, the, the information we are getting was mixed. You know, there were scientific studies coming out both ways, and, but as things developed on, it became very clear as other states decided to be more open and allow students to come back to, to school more quickly than California did, some of them never even shutting down, and allow them to be able to continue matriculate, we were seeing massive impacts in our schools.
Oh, yeah.
And, and particularly in those younger years, when we're talking about K through two, where they did not have the opportunity to learn certain social interactions, and it wasn't limited to what was going on in classrooms. You know, these were lacks of playdate, social cues and interactions that we take for granted being older, that we, but that we learned from a very young age. And, and to that extent, I agree with your comment, that we have not, there is not yet even a, a beginning to understand about the long-term impacts of some of those developmental issues, because as you learn them at an early age, it doesn't just set you back the time that you didn't get them, it sets you back from the continued development. Those building blocks that are necessary to grow and continue on with the young children, growing into young adolescents and then into adulthood, were missing. They're missing for an extended period of time. And so that's, you know, I, I felt very badly for the parents. I've been one of them. You know, we were all thrust into a role. I'm not a, a teacher by, by trade or education. My parent, my mom is, my, my mother-in-law is still a, a, a preschool teacher and was a kindergarten teacher at the time. And, you know, I, I, I felt very, I, I, I felt for it. I understood it because I was going through the same thing, and I understood why people were so concerned about their physical, their children's physical well-being because there was so little that was known. But, and, and, but then there was more known, and we still had people fearing, and I felt badly for them too. But, and then we had families on the other side who were masked up, whose kids were suffering from the masking up, and from, and from the lack of social, of social interactions. So, so to me, I was very, I still am very empathetic. I, and I, I still want to support those parents who, for whatever reason, because we don't know all their personal situations, for whatever reason, they want to still have their children masked in certain situations, and they masked, I, I respect that choice. And, and our numbers were similar to yours. I think, Joe, in, in the Hart District, we were finding that, that our, the feedback we were getting was about a third, a third, a third. A third said, absolutely no way are we gonna vaccinate our kids. Another third that said, we're not gonna, you know, we will absolutely vaccinate our kids. And then the other third who were undecided and, but wanted, but very much were in favor of having a choice because they were undecided. So that's, that's really, that's how it came out.
So Brian, you're, you're part of this, this movement across the valley, the family, family-friendly trustees or slash candidates, and, and in that our, our mantra is, you know, it's your money, it's your tax dollars, they're your schools, they're your kids. Parents deserve to have a voice. And, you know, especially now, where some of us kind of weren't really paying attention to that part, but it is, why is it so important for parents to have a voice, input, and access to their child's education?
Well, first off, we live in an era, it's a good question. We live in an era, it used to be that you didn't really have a choice. You just go to your neighborhood school, you call it a day, and that's what it was. Now, in our modern era, we actually have lots of choices. There are charter schools, there are private schools. This valley is very blessed to have lots of great school districts and lots of great schools. But, but ultimately, my, my mom, who was a school board president and served on the school board, where I grew up in Arizona, told me something when I was first thinking about going on the board. She said, understand two very important things. She said, first off, that, it, it was really one thing that was, that was about two things. She said, understand that when it comes to schools and school districts, it involves the things that, the two things that most parents are, are, care, care most about, which is their kids and money. So, so the reality is, is that you need to make sure that you're, that you're respecting that and you're understanding what it was. And we do fight for our kids to have a great place to be in public schools, because I was raised in public schools from K to twelve. I got the terrific education. We want all parents to feel like they have that same option. New Hall's really tried to make that focus. I'm grateful that while we talk about a parent-first movement, my entire school board has been very supportive of this.
Yep.
And I, and I, and I'm really proud of them for it. And so this is really, this is really a bigger movement about making sure that we, that parents feel like they have a voice. Because the reality is, is when you don't feel seen and hurt on either side, you're, you're gonna be mad. You're gonna be mad.
Well, you listen, and that's why people have to pay attention to guys like you. Pay attention to who they're voting for, because we saw a, a school board in town flip pretty quick, and look at how bad it got. You know, one trustee did another than another, and it's, it's my humble personal opinion, no, maybe not so humble. It's a nightmare over there. So quickly, because we're up on the time, how do people get in touch with you? How do they visit your website? How do they help you out?
Excellent. Well, I, I would appreciate any and all those who'd like to support the continued work of defending everything that's good in the district. That's why my mantra's been. You can certainly reach out to me via email. You can, because you're constituent stakeholders, whatever else, feel free to reach me at my school district one, because that's a good way to get me, bwalterz@newhallsc.com. If you'd like to talk to me personally about my campaign, Walters, W A L T E R S, G as in George, C as in Charlie, at gmail dot com. That looks like WaltersGC at gmail dot com. And feel free to reach me. I would even take phone calls if you're interested. Six six one six four four seven five seven four, six six one six four four seven five seven four. And Joe, thanks for giving me a, a few minutes to talk to you about these issues that matter so much to you and our community.
Brian, you're one, you're one of the champions on the boards in this town. People don't pay attention, but you do need guys like you on these boards to make sure the parents and the kids have a right as well. So thanks, thanks for, thanks for stepping up again. I wasn't gonna run either, so I get it. All right, great to have you with me.
Perfect. Take care. Have a great day.
Okay. You're listening to Trending SCV. I'm Joe Messina, your host. Matt Funicello is still here, believe it or not.
Hello.
You're awful quiet for an Italian guy. Seriously. We'll talk more about all this on the other side of the break. We'll be right back.
Santa Clarita Lanes is more than just a bowling center. It's fun, food, and parties for the entire family. In addition to their popular leagues that run every day of the week, Santa Clarita Lanes offers rooms for kids' birthday parties and game rooms. And if you love the NFL, Vincenzo's Pizza is the place to be on Sundays with the complete NFL football package, showing every game on its ten televisions and widescreens. Whether it's bowling, birthdays, or the NFL, Santa Clarita Lanes offers the best in family entertainment.
Hey Ned, what are you doing with that calculator? The customer said they don't have the money for a new system right now, and their old AC system has had it. It's too bad we can't help them.
Yes, we can. Pacific Air now has special financing. Zero payments and zero interest for a year. I mean, we'll help people stay cool in Simi Valley, Ojai, Fillmore, and all over Ventura County. Aren't you supposed to tell me to get in the truck?
Nope. Let's go tell the customer the good news.
Mark and Kaylee for Pacific Air.
Maybe Ned needs to switch to decaf.
But everyone at Pacific Air is excited about our new financing options.
If you're a homeowner that's a little strapped for cash, finding money to replace a broken HVAC system can be difficult.
Not anymore. Introducing Pack Air's new zero payments and zero interest for a year on any new HVAC system.
No surprises, just exceptional service. Because nobody cares like Pacific Air, we think you'll say.
Whoa!
Call Pacific Air.
Learn more about our new financing options today at packair.com.
K H T S, your hometown station.
Why, you did say something, didn't you? Are you doing that on purpose? Or can't you make up your mind?
That's the trouble. I can't make up my mind. I haven't got a brain. Only straw.
How can you talk if you haven't got a brain?
I don't know. But some people without brains do an awful lot of talking, don't they?
Yes, I guess you're right.
You're listening to Trending SCV here on your hometown station, AM twelve twenty, FM ninety-eight point one. Head over to hometownstation.com, hometownstation.com. Get all the, your local news, information on sports and other things going on here in the valley. It's important that you know what's going on in the valley, and I mean that sincerely. Can't tell you how many people I speak with on a regular basis, and you don't have to follow politics to have a clue as to what's happening around here, and you need to find out where that's happening. So for up to minute news, just head over to hometownstation.com. Matt Funicello is a, I believe you're a proud parent.
Yes, I am.
Here in the Santa Clarita Valley, and you're currently with the Saugus Union School District, and as I joke, when we say my condolences go to you.
Thank you.
For that.
I know what. Yeah.
I know what a treat it was.
Yeah.
In the last year or two. So, you know, as a parent and, and, and active, a person that's active in politics in the valley at all, when you look out there and you look at what's going on with the school districts, I mean, what bothers you the most? And, and, and when I say that, I don't mean just from the lack of services to the kids. I mean, the, the political landscape as it's now creeping into our education system. Tell me what you think.
I think what's upsetting the most, and again, this was really exposed, thank you, due to COVID. What, what really irks my mind, or irks me in the wrong way, is the general disrespect that the board has for parents. And the elitism, the cronyism, the nepotism that comes from that, you know? The superintendent of, of the school board, you know, brings in friends from down in Compton to, to be principals or vice principals or, you know, otherwise work at the schools, and they pretty much poo-poo anybody, any of the parents' opinions on that. We all want the best for our kids. That's without a shadow of a doubt. We all want the best for our kids. But what I've seen specifically when it comes to Saugus Union School Board is the massive, massive dump of left-wing politics in, into the school system. And as a school board, you shouldn't be devolving into petty politics like that. It should always be first and foremost for the kids, and how do we support the kids and the parents? You know, Grant, I'm not running for school board yet, maybe, but I, I do understand as a parent that you cannot disrespect the, the parents the way that they have been, especially over the last two years.
I'm watching some of the school boards, and I won't mention any names yet. I'm watching some of the school boards. When, when I listen to the trustees talk, it's, I think, I want. When they start going down that road, it bothers me because it's not about you.
No.
We, we're, we represent the parents. And you can say things like, okay, I've received, I've received a lot of communications, I've received a lot of calls around this, and this is where people, I voted for things in the past that I didn't personally want. But again, we're representative government. My area wanted a certain thing, and that's the area that we went down. So that's what bothers me. I think they, I think a lot of people get on those boards to take a, make a stepping stone to something else. And right now, what we've seen is what the, and I'm just gonna say it, what the other side has put up against us is nothing but a slate of truly progressive socialists that totally believe in masking your kids, taking your rights away from you to decide what to do with your kids, what education they see. It's, you know, even the sex education that goes on in K through six, why?
There's.
They, they can't even spell sex.
That, that bugs me to, to, to no end. I, I think, look, do I think that you need a background in education to serve as a school board member? No, I don't. I, I think you can serve on the school board just fine without an educational background, just as long as you have a fundamental understanding of, of what goes on. However, that being said, when you have, I won't mention any names either, but when you have people on the left who come, come in kicking and screaming with just politics, 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 and no iota of a clue on what goes on in the school board, no kids, no nothing, you're, you know, I don't, I don't understand it.
You know, what's funny is, when I first got elected, or when it came against me the first couple of times, it was, he's too religious and he's too political. And we don't want prayer brought back to school. If you don't think there's prayer going on in school, you're out of your mind anyway. But political. I've been on the board for thirteen years. I've never brought one political iota of anything to the board. It just started happening recently with some of the other board members. And as far as prayer goes, look, I pray before I get there. I don't tell my kids to pray, you know, when they get to school. And who wants some government, a, a government official writing out a prayer?
Yeah.
I mean, really? Seriously?
Last time I checked, the district hasn't turned into the church and, and the pulpit.
Thank you.
You know what I mean? So, yeah.
No, it, it's ridiculous. But the people who get up there, I, I get worried when I know people have aspirations to go further, and it's kind of like, you watch them. But what people don't understand is, we got about a minute, but what people don't understand is that we all have to work together. Like the lesson, Joe, why are you involved in these other candidates? Because I have to work with these people. And, and if they're totally of a different mindset, if they're really on a page for the kids, I don't want them.
No.
I don't want to have to work with them.
Everybody has to be on the same page. And again, you have to work with, just because they're not working with you on your specific board, they're working with you in some kind of capacity, because those students will eventually become your students, or, you know, that school district's students. So everybody has to coalesce around the same, same end goal.
Yeah.
And I think that's what you're doing.
No, I agree with you.
It's fantastic.
All right, so we gotta get rolling now. We're gonna bring you back. I want you to talk about a program that you're gonna put in place here, very short, very soon, because we're out of time.
Yes, sir.
And you are listening to Trending SCV. We, for the next, I think, a week and a half, maybe two weeks, we're gonna be talking about the, talking to and about the candidates, education, politics, and as you know me, there will be no filter around any of those things.
I approve that message.
Yeah. I really do care about your kids. A lot of, when you look at that slate, you'll find out that we all do really care about your kids and want to fight your kids. All right, God bless. Have a great rest of the day, people. We're here on Friday. That's right, Friday, eleven o'clock. You can have a, I guess, a brunch with us, if you would. We'll be back Friday.